Thursday.
Hey, it's alright.
Thank you. I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, November 6th, 2025, to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Absolutely. Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui? Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Matrasco?
Here.
Trustee Beacon?
Here.
Madam Mayor Janoe?
Here. Tonight, the girls JV2 Glenbard West Hilltoppers and Glenbard North Panthers will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. I'd love to hear more about the achievements and if we can share with the board who's here with us today?
Yeah, we'll do that. My name is Matt Bowser. I'm the Assistant Principal for Athletics at Glenbard North High School. So, thank you very much for having us here today. We're just gonna do a couple of introductions. I have our head girls soccer coach, Miguel Dominguez Carreño. We have our assistant coach, Teresa Orlo, and then Adam Sisco, who is in the back there, who is also, he is the head girls soccer coach at Glenbard West. And they're going to introduce the girls. Adam, if you want to start off?
Yeah, we have Camilla.
Sir, could you come to the mic? Not that you need it, but...
I'm loud enough for everybody. We have Camilla, we have Idowande, we have Alena, we have Daniela, we have Aranza, and we have Jackie.
Wonderful.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Miguel Dominguez Carreño, and I'm the head coach at Glenbard North High School. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Addison Richardson, Julia Casada, Noel Gray Song, and they were coached by the one and only Coach Orlo.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us, and I'd love to hear about your season. How did it go this year?
It went really good.
Good, good. Wonderful. Did you, did these two teams ever play each other?
They did. So, actually, we're here because on April 12th last year, which was the opening day, Camera Park, the new turf field that you put in, these girls Glenbard West versus Glenbard North actually matched up on that day and played the JV2 soccer game. So, we've been fortunate to use the field that day, as well as probably three or four games that our boys used this past fall, culminating with our, the Glenbard West varsity boys soccer team versus the Glenbard North varsity boys soccer team. So, we just appreciate, wanted to say thank you, guys. It's always important for us, for students from District 87, to feel like, that are part of the Glendale Heights community, feel like they are at home. So, being able to bring them the opportunity to play in their community has been great for us, and we really appreciate those partnerships. Over the years, we've been able to do a variety of different things and uses. We appreciate working with Bill and everybody else, and we wanted to say thank you. So, we would like to present you with our game ball from that day.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Oh, you signed it. That's really special.
It's all signed too. Look at that.
Thank you so much.
She did score a goal with that ball.
Well, on behalf of the Village Board of Glendale Heights, congratulations, ladies. Thank you to the leaders, the adults in the room, the teachers, and the coaches for shining a light on our community and kind of helping rebuild, you know, the identity of what we already know to be here. What did you guys think about the turf field? Did you like it?
Yeah.
Good, good. Well, thank you so much. We're super proud of you. We're super excited to have you, and we hope to see you again soon.
Wait, when's your next game? Are you guys gonna play there anytime soon?
Um, I assume it starts in spring, I believe.
Okay. You gotta let us know so we can come cheer you on. That'd be great.
Heck yeah.
Yeah, we're working, so obviously, boys soccer season is in the fall. So, we'll, like I said, we played three or four games there, different District 87 schools, and then we already have started to schedule three or four that we have in this upcoming spring. So, trying to do that on a yearly basis.
Wonderful. Can we ask for a quick picture with the board and the game ball?
Yes.
Come on up. Does someone wanna hold it?
One, two, three.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much.
I saw one for one go to their gates.
We did watch it the day open, remember?
I couldn't, I couldn't stay that day. I was there.
We now move on to petitions and communications. Board report. Trustee Beacon?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for those joining us tonight, and also the ones watching at home. My board report's very simple. It's, I attended, oh, I attended the coffee with the mayor, and I appreciate those who came out to have some discussions with us. That's all for me for now.
Thank you. Trustee Matrasco?
No report this week.
Thank you. Trustee Maritato?
Uh, no complaints, but a couple meetings I attended, coffee with the mayor, uh, let's see, what else did I do? Uh, turkey shoot was Sunday.
Oh, yeah.
And I met with a resident last week, Thursday, and I have Dave. This is all you. So, you two run it.
So, there was a local resident who posted about her son every morning, or every week, dressing up in Republic Services gear as the, their local garbage pickup person would drive by. Super cute. So, we arranged a meet and greet, and it happened to be in Pat's district. And so, we made a short little video of this little meet and greet with Republic Services.
Wonderful. It is so cute.
Republic Services did a great job to really engage with this local resident. So, we have a short video that we'll show for this.
On behalf of Republic Services, since you are our favorite littlest fan, we've got some treats for you. You have a little garbage cart, and since it's Halloween, we put candy in it, and you get a Republic Services coloring book, get some friends, and since you learned you wanted to dress up for Halloween, you got a cute little shirt that says, "Pickup Day is my favorite day."
Wow, that's wonderful.
That little boy waits for that garbage truck every Thursday. And his mom made that little cardboard garbage truck out of, out of a cardboard box.
Awesome.
And yeah, every Thursday, he waits for the garbage guy to come. He waves to him, and it's really amazing. Nice little story.
Yeah, it's cute. Thank you, trustee. Thank you, David. Thank you very much. Clerk Darlene?
Hello. We have Daisy, who turned 100 this, this week at the sports, at the senior center. David, I think you have our little pictures for us of Daisy?
Yeah, right up there.
How wonderful.
We celebrated Daisy's 100th birthday at the senior center. I think she celebrated, we celebrated during bingo here, and then, did you guys attend her lunch, Jim and Tika? Then she had a luncheon right after that for everybody. It was just, it was just an outstanding day. These are things that we do at the senior center. Really, please come join us. This is just an excellent program there. I attended all, of course, the regular meetings. Last night, we did a special fundraiser for the hospital last night. That was just an outstanding event, in my opinion. Loved that, every piece of that. And I think that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Trustee Schmidt?
No report.
Thank you. Trustee Light?
No report.
Thank you. Community, I just wanna bring your attention to work that we're doing currently in light of government shutdown and the impact that our local families, seniors, children, might be experiencing as a result of the SNAP reduction in funding. So, just to bring awareness, community, we do have more details coming soon, but essentially, we're working in partnership with Pastor Cass at Family and Faith, the local food pantry here, to make sure that there's enough resources there to support the increased demand. They have already seen there an increase in our seniors and our families seeking access to food and nutrition, and as a response to that, we as an organization are standing up. We have bins where we are collecting non-perishable items. I believe they are located at our...
Civic Center?
Civic Center.
Sports Hub.
Sports Hub.
And Senior Center.
And Senior Center. Thank you so much. We've already had several deliveries from those bins being filled. So, you know, more details to come. I know that we're sharing the information. Also, some additional programming where we'll be able to support our seniors who have, need access to some additional meals. So, if you have a need, if you know somebody who has a need, if you want more information, please reach out. We wanna make sure that all of our community feels supported and well during this time. Lastly, before we move on, I know we have some other special guests here in the audience from Glenbard West. I know we have Raba, and then the team in the back. So, why don't you come on up, students. For those watching at home, those here, these are students from Glenbard West who, as part of their class requirements, needed to attend a board meeting and take a picture to prove that they were here. So, come on up. We wanna thank you.
Wait, is the group growing? Didn't we have the door?
Yeah, there's more, yeah. It's doubled in size, I think.
There we go.
Should take this, should take this after the board meeting, make sure they're here for a whole meeting.
Alright, are we all ready? Ready, one, two, three. Alright, who's my selfie? Who's my selfie? Long arm, great phone. Alright, let's go. You gotta squeeze together tight. Alright, Borden, we're gonna have to squeeze in, Borden.
Oh, yeah, we gotta squeeze a lot more.
Alright, down in front. Alright, good job, girls. Thank you for coming out. Thank you, Borden. Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming out. We're moving on to our community announcements. Village Administrator Ducklin?
Thank you, Mayor. Nice coffee and chat with the village president and board. It'll be Saturday, December 6th, the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you're unable to attend, have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village presence office anytime, 630-909-5302, or contact your local district trustee.
Thank you. Community Development Director Jason Enberg?
Get in the spirit of the holiday season and register your house for the Holiday in the Heights House Decorating Contest. Register your home starting Monday, December 1st through Tuesday, December 16th to compete for the best decorated house in Glendale Heights. An interactive map with voting will be active starting Friday, December 19th, and the winner will be announced on Tuesday, January 6th on the village's Facebook page. For more information, please contact Jessica at 630-260-6060. We would like to remind residents that per village code, do not rake or move leaves or yard waste into the village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any debris for safe driving. Yard waste collection occurs on the same day as regular waste and recycling pickup. The final collection day for yard waste will be November 26th, 28th, and 29th, depending on when your usual waste of recycling pickup occurs. If you have any questions, please call Republic Services at 847-981-0091.
Thank you. Chief Pappas?
Veterans Day Ceremony. Join the Glendale Heights, join the Village of Glendale Heights, the Glendale Heights VFW Post 2377, for a Veterans Day Ceremony as we honor all military personnel, past and present. Ceremony will begin at 11:00 a.m. on Veterans Day, November 11th. The ceremony includes a flag and color guard presentation, rifle salute, and a tribute to our fallen warriors. Please note that all village offices will be closed on Tuesday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. For more information, please contact Jessica at 630-260-6060. The Village of Glendale Heights, the Glendale Heights Police Department, and our local school districts are teaming up to encourage everyone to take the TL.D. pledge for safe driving. Schools back in session now for all Glendale Heights residents, and we're encouraging all drivers to put down their phone, keep your eyes on the road, slow down, and drive like your child lives here. TL.D. stickers are available at the village facilities, our school resource officers, and with our crossing guards. We encourage you to place these vinyl stickers on the corner of your back window of your car, front window at your home, or place a business as a reminder to drive safely. And remember, these are our roads, not race tracks. For more information, please visit www.glandeights.org/TL.D.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Director of Leisure Services, Keith Nance?
Thank you, Mayor. The Village of Glendale Heights invites the entire community to celebrate the start of the holiday season with the annual tree lighting ceremony on Monday, December 1st. This event will be from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. with the official tree lighting at 7:15. The tree lighting ceremony will be returning to Village Hall, located at 300 Civic Center Plaza, and not at Camera Park. There will be hot chocolate, sweet treats, photos with Mr. and Mrs. Claus, and much more. If you have any questions, please contact Jessica at 630-260-6060, or visit the Leisure Services Department website at www.ghrec.org. Victorian Christmas and Kris Kende Market. Join the Village of Glendale Heights and the Historical Committee for our Victorian Christmas featuring a Kris Kende Market. Come on out to Heritage Park and the Historic House, located at 311 Windy Point Drive, on Saturday, December 6th, from 1:30 to 4:30. In addition to the Kris Kende Market, there will be tours of the Historic House, arts and crafts, and much more. If you're interested in being a vendor, or for more information, please contact Jessica at 630-260-6060.
Thank you. Director of Public Works, Jeff McHumber?
Thank you, Mayor. Street sweeping and parking restrictions. During the remainder of November, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040. Holiday cards for the military. While writing your holiday greeting cards to friends and family, please remember our military personnel who have or who are currently serving our country during the holidays. The village is collecting holiday greeting cards, and will mail them in time for a holiday delivery. Please drop off your holiday greeting cards to Village Hall by Thursday, December 4th. Please do not put cards in envelopes, decorate cards with glitter, or add personal contact information like email or social media. For more information, please contact Jessica at 630-260-6060.
Thank you. Human Resources Manager Peter Cahill?
The Village of Glendale Heights is now accepting applications for the new Glendale Heights Capital Vision Committee. This new committee assists the village board and village administration by reviewing proposed capital improvement projects, long-term financial plans, and fiscal policy recommendations. The committee will consist of one resident per district. Applications must be submitted to your district trustee for review by Friday, November 14th. To apply, please visit www.glandeights.org and submit an application to your district trustee. For more information, please contact Nicole Washington at 630-909-5303. I'm also filling in for Darcy today. The Linda Jackson Center for Senior Service Citizens offers free Medicare and Medicaid assistance to Medicare beneficiaries and their caregivers. The center is a senior health insurance program-sponsored site, and certified volunteer counselors are available to meet one-on-one to answer questions and guide you through the process. To schedule an appointment or for more information, please call the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Services at 630-260-6050. Seasonal Market. Join us for the Glendale Heights Seasonal Market on the first and third Thursday of each month. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Sports Hub. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya at 630-909-5459.
Thank you, Peter. Director of Finance, Andrew Poyntz?
Thank you, Mayor. Food Drive. The Village of Glendale Heights is now accepting non-perishable food items, canned goods, condiments, and toiletries throughout the months of November and December. Bins are located at Village Hall, the Sports Hub, and the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens, and will be donated to Family and Faith Food Pantry, along with other food pantries in Glendale Heights. For more information, please call the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070, or the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050. Christmas Sharing. The Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program helps give back to those families in need during the holiday season. We understand the importance of the holidays and the challenges that many families face each and every day. Christmas Sharing gives trees with wished-for items and ornaments will be available soon at Village Hall, the Sports Hub, and the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens, as we try to give back to those in need. If you're interested in making a monetary donation to support the Christmas Sharing Program and give back to the community, please email christmassharing@glandeights.org.
Thank you. Moving on, we have a call for a public hearing by the mayor and board of trustees on November 20th, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. for the purpose of discussing the annual tax levy assessment and collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2025, and ending April 30th, 2026. Item 4, a call for a special village board meeting by the mayor and board of trustees on Thursday, November 13th, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to discuss and approve fiscal year 2025-2026 mid-year budget. Item 5, a proclamation to proclaim the month of November as Diabetes Awareness Month. A proclamation to proclaim November 15th, 2025, as School Board Member Day. And 4, if there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations.
Go for it.
Number 7?
Did I miss one?
Oh, we did not.
I missed one. Lo siento. Halloween in the Heights. Recreation Supervisor Jessica?
Thank you, Mayor. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Jessica Marsage, and I work for the Recreation Division for the Village of Glendale Heights. I am here tonight to present the results of the Halloween in the Heights House Decorating Contest. This program was created last year to showcase the creativity of our residents as they celebrate the Halloween season. After a very successful first year, we decided to make this contest an annual tradition for the community to look forward to every October. This free contest was exclusively open to Glendale Heights residents. Registration was available for the first three weeks of October, and voting started on October 22nd. Everyone then had one week to vote for the spookiest house in Glendale Heights before the top three winners were announced on Halloween. This year, a total of 13 households participated, and 375 people voted. I would now like to take this opportunity to showcase the top winners as determined by the voters. If any of the winners are here tonight, please join me at the podium so you may be recognized by the board and the community. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Of course. Thank you, guys. The third-place winner is Haunted Hills Cemetery, submitted by the Cervantes family. They received 49 votes.
Very nice.
The second-place winner is The Inferno, submitted by the Zama Dyo family. This was a very close race, with only a four-point difference between second and third place. The Inferno received a total of 53 votes. And the first-place winner, receiving a whopping 92 votes, is Corpse on Keaton, submitted by the Hernandez family.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And as the mayor already started, a big thank you to all of the households who participated, not just the lovely winners that we have, and to everyone who participated in the voting of the contest. I also wanna do a special thank you to my coworkers, Luisa Barardi and Chris Dewoski, who've worked with me to make this project possible. Without their collaboration, we would not be able to put on another successful year of this contest. It was mentioned during the opening announcements, but I wanna mention it as well. I am excited to announce that we are also doing the Holiday in the Heights House Decorating Contest again this year. Glendale Heights residents are invited to register and submit photos of their decorated homes from December 1st through the 16th. Anyone can view the festive homes on the website and can vote for their favorite homes starting on December 19th. The top three winners will then be announced on January 6th. For more information, please visit the Sports Hub website. Thank you for the opportunity to showcase both of these contests and to see some of our wonderful winners, and I believe the mayor would also like a photo with all of you guys as well.
What does the winner get?
What does the winner get? So, would you guys actually like to say all of your prizes? Because that'd require me to remember all of the donations we received.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe we received a gift card to Kai's Steakhouse.
Oh, good.
And we got a certificate saying that we won, and just come here to get recognized by all of you.
Super cool. Super cool.
It's great that you guys decided to do this again. It's been fun having the community involved within it. Also, we had the community snake, which you guys came and got to enjoy. It's just awesome, you know, doing, doing stuff.
Okay, that was your house with the snake rock?
Yeah, yup, yup.
I love that. Thank you so much.
We got pictures of a couple of you guys in the electric chair that we had up. It was a good, good time.
So fun. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
I've got a question. How long did it take you to set up all this?
This year, I believe we started setting up around Labor Day weekend. Last year, we didn't place at all, so we decided to go a little bit bigger.
Competition. I love it.
We're a part of the Chicago Honk Builders. It's kind of a community on Facebook, really, a social media thing, but we've, you know... But we've, you know, learned and seen, gotten better ideas from a lot of different people a part of that. One of the main guys is just over here, Carol Stream. He's got the Canyon Trail. He does the big Halloween display, huge Christmas display.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's fun participating in all of that, you know?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get a picture.
I was the third place at Haunted Hill. It takes me about two weekends to do everything. And then we got a certificate and a lovely gift card to Pronto's.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for participating. Thank you.
While everyone gets set up for the photos, I also just want to make it known, all three of our winners did participate in the contest last year as well. Our second-place winner was a winner from last year, but these two individuals learned from last year. They did not place last year, but they obviously placed this year, so great job to all the decorations you guys did. Thank you very much.
Of course I thought. Okay, so moving on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? You have the consent agenda before you. Item number three, approval of the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five payroll and the accounts payable listing of November sixth, twenty twenty-five, and the total amount not to exceed one million four hundred and twenty-one thousand sixty-four... I said that wrong. One million four hundred and twenty-one thousand and sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents needs to be amended, and therefore removed from the consent agenda to new business. Is there a motion to remove consent item number three to new business? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Matrasco. Any discussion, board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
The motion to remove consent item number three to new business is approved. Would Village Administrator Doug Flynn please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Two, approval of the committee's whole meeting minutes of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Three, has been moved to new business. Four, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award, authorizing the execution of the contract for the copy and scanner lease and maintenance agreement for the Village of Glendale Heights Fleet of Copiers. Five, resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one. Final, would see Zabo Contract Incorporated for the CDBG Cambridge Lane and West Chester Drive Water Main Improvement Project, Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Six, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the Second Amendment to the Janitorial Services Contract by and between Best Quality Facility Services LLC, DBA Best Quality Cleaning in the Village of Glendale Heights. Seven, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the Third Amendment to Utility Billing and Mailing Services Contract by and between Third Millennium Associates Incorporated, the Village of Glendale Heights. Eight, resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and the execution of a contract for the purchase installation of playground equipment and perfect turf, perfect play, cord rubber system surface for the Americana Park Playground Restoration Project. Nine, approval of pay request number three to Utility Services Company, Inc., for the West Burdette five-hundred-thousand-gallon elevated petosphere water storage tank annual maintenance, total amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-nine thousand and one dollar. Ten, approval of pay request number nine to Utility Service Company for the first, for the East Burdette five-hundred-thousand-gallon elevated petosphere water storage tank annual maintenance, total amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Eleven, approval of pay request number seven to Utility Service Company Incorporated for the West Burdette North one-million-gallon ground storage tank annual maintenance, total amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. Twelve, approval of pay request number twelve to Utility Service Company Incorporated for the Glen Island Road two-hundred-thousand-gallon elevated water storage tank annual maintenance, total amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand seventy-six dollars and eighty-four cents. Thirteen, approval of pay request number ten to Utility Service Company, Inc., for the Brandon Court one-million-gallon elevated water storage tank annual maintenance, total amount not to exceed ninety-six thousand dollars, ninety... ninety-six thousand ninety-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Fourteen, approval of pay request number four, final, to see Zabo Contract Incorporated for the Cambridge Lane and West Chester Drive Water Main Replacement Project, total amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand sixty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Fifteen is approval of consent items.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Beacon?
Still move. Second.
Meritato, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business, a motion to waive first reading on the new business item number two. Is there a motion to waive that first reading on new business item number two?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Matrasco.
Second.
Trustee Light, thank you. Any discussion, board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item number two is approved. Item number two, an ordinance to amend Chapter Two entitled Vehicle Licenses, Title VII entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading is waived. This is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Matrasco. Any discussion, board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty is approved. Item three, approval of the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five payroll and the accounts payable listing of November sixth, twenty twenty-five, and the total amount not to exceed one million four hundred and twenty-one thousand sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Is there a motion amend, to amend the total amount of the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five payroll and accounts payable listing of November sixth, twenty twenty-five to one million five hundred and thirteen thousand fifty-four dollars and ninety cents, and an increase of ninety-one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-eight cents? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt. Any discussion, board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to amend the total amount of the October twenty... excuse me, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five payroll and accounts payable listing of November sixth, twenty twenty-five to one million five hundred and thirteen thousand fifty-four dollars and ninety cents is approved. Public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Executive session, there is none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Meritato. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Beacon, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting Thursday, November sixth, to order. Would the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Mr. Light?
Um, Winter.
Winter, okay. Anyone else?
Did you say Winter? Yes.
Okay. All right, okay. Committee reports. Glendale Heights Golf Club Committee.
Sunday, we had a turkey shoot. Saturday, on Sunday, we had something like a hundred and forty-four golfers.
Hundred and eighty-seven.
Oh, wow.
Wow, each day. So it really turned out, it really turned out to be a good, a good turkey shoot for us this year, so.
Is that an increase from last year?
It's about the same. Generally speaking, the full, a full house is a hundred and forty-four. Because of the time of year, we always end up with few people that end up sick or other things, so right around the normal amount.
Okay. Nice.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Historical Committee.
Of course I do. Okay. First, I want to say, congratulations to the family that won the the haunted house or decorations. I think I could use them next year, right around the same time we do the spooky open house. I just want to take a minute to, first of all, thank everyone that helped at the spooky open house. I realize Jessica has a very twisted mind, and she, she and I really had a lot of fun decorating. We have some of the pictures rolling through up here that we had from the open house. I want to thank everyone on the committee. We put a lot of work into it, and it was a fantastic time, and it was our first spooky open house. We had brains for dinner. We had all sorts of fun stuff set up. It was not a haunted house, but I did receive a lot of, a lot of kudos on doing what we did. It was displaying, it was displaying the historic house in a manner that was suggested to me by a resident. And I thought it was a fantastic idea, and we'll do it again next year. So I appreciate everybody's help with it, and I appreciate everybody that came out to see it. Also, we do have our next open house, which is with our Chris Kringle Market and our Victorian Christmas, which will be on December sixth, from one to four thirty. So thank you, everybody that makes this work out to the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Light. Ordinance Committee?
Yes, thank you. We met and worked on some ordinances, one of which you saw this evening, the change in the vehicle sticker program. We also tackled building code revisions, the inspection, properties, sale inspection procedure, and we created the Capital Vision Committee. All in all, it was a very productive meeting.
Sure was.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt. Parks and Recreations Committee?
Uh, no report.
Property Enhancement Committee?
Do you want to take?
That should be me, too. Okay, so the good thing, we did meet. We did have a meeting, and it was a landlords' and managers' meeting, which we discussed the renewal process for cloud permit. I did learn a lot about that, too, as well, so I can't wait to share that with you guys. That's it for me. Senior Citizens Advisory Committee?
Again, we had a productive meeting with the planning for the next year's events. And then we had the Halloween party, which was attended by approximately a hundred seniors. Very creative with some of the costumes. We had group costumes, individuals, and even some people that chose to show up without dressing up. But just want to flag everybody, we've got the holiday luncheon coming up here early in December, and we're looking to fill the room again, so seniors, take note. Thank you.
Thank you again. Discussions regarding, we have none. I have... Go ahead.
Can I get a question?
Go ahead.
Is Doug coming back?
I believe so.
Do you think that we should explain the, the vehicle stickers?
Sure.
So maybe some of the residents will understand what we did?
Yeah.
That we passed?
We can certainly do that. I can start us off, and then maybe people can help me.
Okay, why don't we, why don't you do it, Mayor?
I will, thank you. So, community, we, together as a board, discussed the current program that's been in place since nineteen fifty-nine for vehicle stickers in Glendale Heights, and the requirement to have a vehicle sticker. What are the values that add for us as a community? We know that parking is limited. In a lot of our neighborhoods, it's very limited. So having a parking, a village sticker on your car ensures that you can park overnight. Many of our, most of our neighboring towns don't permit any parking overnight. So taking into consideration the very tight parking that we have here, lots of one-car garages, one-car driveways. We knew that it was important that our residents still have access to parking, but the cost of the program of creating the stickers, the administrative cost and of sending out the applications, this was definitely not a program that was going to be a revenue creating. So as a board, together, we discussed the value, and we decided collectively that we were going to move into this new program. So effective, I believe, July, May?
May one.
May one.
Twenty-six.
We'll be going into a new model for the village sticker. They are still required, but they will only cost one dollar. And this is going to help, you know, our residents, right now, times are financially tough, but also the value is there. Our, our people who do park on the street will be able to do so safely and not incur any cost from a citation. Did I get all that right, board? It's also...
So, if you have a current twenty twenty-five vehicle sticker, that's your forever sticker. You don't need to go buy a new one, right? Everybody should know that that's your sticker. If you don't have a twenty twenty-five sticker, you need to purchase a twenty twenty-five sticker this year, because we're still enforcing vehicle stickers up through this year, through fiscal year, through April thirtieth. So there's no exemption between now and then, because this ordinance doesn't take effect till May one, twenty twenty-six. So that's the effective date. So between now and then, you still need a village sticker. If you have a twenty twenty-five sticker, that's your forever sticker. If you don't have a twenty twenty-five sticker, or if you buy a new vehicle, or a new resident moves in, doesn't have a sticker, a forever sticker will cost a dollar. And that's your sticker that everybody's going to know what it is, and that'll be your privilege, for lack of a better word, or authority, to park on the street between two AM and six AM. So we don't want to change the parking. We want Glendale Heights residents or those visiting Glendale Heights residents to be able to park on the street overnight. We allow parking twenty-four seven. So the sticker is really the only way we have of regulating who's authorized, if you will, to park on the street overnight. So that side of it isn't going away. The enforcement side of that's not going away. It's purely the, the staff time that was costing us more money than the revenues were coming in, essentially. The cost of postage has gone up, and we mail out seventeen or eighteen thousand pieces of mail for these vehicle stickers every year. Imagine what that costs. And then receiving eighteen thousand piece of mail back, and then mailing back out all the vehicle stickers. I mean, the amount of postage we're spending is astronomical. So this is a great program. I think the residents will be very, very happy about this. The staff time will be reduced, and it's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Trustee Light?
I know we've been working on this for a long time. It's been in the, it's been in the pipeline for a while, and I'm excited to see it finally roll out. Just to be clear, that if somebody has a twenty twenty sticker in their window of their car, they do not have to worry about purchasing another sticker. Unless they buy a new car, and then they need to buy the one-dollar forever sticker then.
Right.
Okay, just making it clear, because I know I'll get questions later on that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. I have, Trustee Light, for Winter?
Winter, six-letter bad word. Jeff, question for you. I got this from a resident. Will we still be using salt? Or will we be switching to a chemical base of anything? I mean, we're using the same procedures, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I was just curious, you know, because they were asking me, oh, they were how chances about the amount of salt we've been putting down on the roads and what it's been doing. So I said, I don't think we're changing that much now. We don't have to do that now, do we?
Uh, we don't have to. What we do is we've, the salt systems we have, we calibrate them every year, and we start off, and basically, we've reduced our starting usage, and it's a standard usage we start with significantly. So like an assaulting event, we start the trucks at what we call two hundred pounds a lane mile. We might bump it up to three hundred, but, you know, previously, we just go out and say, all right, use five hundred pounds a lane mile. So we've reduced that significantly. And some of the regulations that'll pop up sooner or later are going to require probably even more of a reduction. So maybe in the future, it'd be some consideration of possibly changing over to a different chemical or some type of brine or something, but for now, we're using salt, and if necessary, we treat it with calcium chloride, which is a liquid that will apply to the salt.
Helps a little bit, then. And then all the trucks are all ready, then? We're ready to go?
Yep, there's a couple of big trucks that are just finishing up calibration, but all the little trucks, one tons, and I think half of the large trucks are ready to rock.
Awesome. I'm looking forward to winter. No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
I'm not looking for that yet.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr.?
Jeff, how's that basketball? We're doing that Cameron Park. Are we almost done with that, or?
So, um...
Do you know?
So as far as I know, they, they changed, Scott went out there, we changed some grades for better drainage. I guess there were some drainage issues there. I guess there were some drainage issues there. Um, there was a talk of, we're going to have to put a curb in and build up a berm, but I think we're doing that in-house, if I'm not mistaken. There won't, the final product won't be till spring, because they can't paint. So they're going to get, uh, the material down and all that this year, and then it'll sit, and then it'll come back in the spring, and they'll paint it.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
Yeah, we are doing the curb and sidewalk in-house in the spring.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to address this board? Go ahead, sir.
At Paul Wayne Avenue? I just have a question, um, on the vehicle six. I'm glad you explained that, because, but you're raising the food and beverage tax, and it's creating a substantial surplus by that. If I did, that's what I'm trying to figure, if I did the math right, that you're going to have almost an extra 200,000. And then there's talk about raising the tax levy, too, which will create additional revenues. So do we need to do that? I mean, as the mayor said when you opened the meeting, you know, things are tight, you know, right now. You know, it's, it's just those little bits. It's, but it's like the old saying, death by a thousand cuts. And if you're already getting almost a 200,000 bump in the food and beverage tax with what you passed for the vehicle stickers, um, then why do we need to raise the tax levy?
Is the question, I'm sorry, I, so how is it with relation to the stickers? That's the part I'm trying to understand.
Well, it's a, if I, I'm trying to figure if I did the math right, and it said that the, you've got, it generates right now $230,000. But with the new 1.5 or whatever that you're adding, it takes up to 423, which is, gives us a surplus of 192,000. So we already have a surplus coming in from what you just did, and we have to raise the tax levy? I'm just wondering, you know...
But you're not in favor, so you're okay with the, with the sticker going to a dollar? I can't tell if that's what the...
Oh, no, the sticker price has nothing to do with it. I'm just saying, you know, if you have almost a $200,000 surplus coming in now because you just raised the food and beverage tax, which, I mean, that does fall back on us. We're the ones buying the stuff. And then we have to raise the tax levy, too? Is that part of the, I know that the tax levy meeting is coming up in the 20th, but that's what I heard the talk is. So I'm just wondering why we need to increase those revenues so dramatically.
I think it's a fair question, and one that I know that we're going to really kind of discuss and get into at that meeting. What I can say for now, um, to the community, and what we're, what we're looking at are the deficits that the, the village has from an operational standpoint, Ed, where the costs are not, um, these are not, the, the cost is not something that we can decide. We are just not going to pay. Um, when we think about things that are, are things like liability insurance, we don't have a choice. We, we are responsible for carrying that, and, um, where that cost has increased, um, we, we have to have a solution for that in place. So ultimately, all the decisions that are made around revenue, um, there's a lot of serious discussion and thought that goes into that, as well as research. And, um, I'm not the expert here. Um, I would defer to the experts. What I can tell you is that this has had, there's been a lot of serious discussion around this. Not just how do we solve for it today, Ed, because we do have to solve for it today, but how do we sustainably do it so that we're, we're also doing no harm into the future? Um, and, and saying, well, not our, we, we could probably squeak by this year, so let's do it, and let's let it be someone else's problem next year. Um, our, our taxpayers, our community deserves better than that. We have to have these hard looks and have these hard, hard talks. So I'll stop there, and I'll look at Andrea. Is there anything else that you feel like we should add here?
So the EAV went up quite a bit. Uh, we kept the levy amount pretty much flat for everyone, and the rates actually decreased.
That, so that's the proposal, is to decrease it?
The, uh, the rate, the property tax levy rate is going to go down, but the dollar amount is going to be pretty much flat, the same amount. It'll be about $36 for the average homeowner more.
A year.
A year. Um, because the EAVs went up so much.
But the, the, the village's portion of the property tax bill is actually going down from last year to this year.
But you're talking about raising the tax levy, though?
No, no, we're not raising, no, no. The, the tax levy is staying relatively flat. The EAV for the community has gone up significantly, raising the cost prices of all the houses, which is raising the property tax of everybody's bill, because the value of the house has gone up.
But what about the village's portion? Isn't that what we're talking about on the 20th, about raising that?
The, the village's portion is relatively flat, and honestly, when, for seniors, we'll pay less this year than last year.
The seniors are the smallest portion of the community, and I mean...
Twenty percent of the community.
That, that's right. It leaves 80% that, you can't just be senior, senior, senior. There's a lot of us that aren't senior. Well, I'm a, I am a senior now, but...
They get the discount.
But I'm just saying, you know, there's just, there's a surplus, and a raise.
And there's also increases everywhere else, right? And...
I'm not arguing with you, Doug. I just wanted an answer to why, why we have a surplus and we're going to raise the levy. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
But we're not raising the levy?
Right, we're not raising levy. The cost of, the, this is a, we have this hearing every year.
Right, and it fluctuates every year.
Based on EAVs and based on a lot of factors, but the overall cost to the village of certain line items that you'll hear about on the 20th, from our insurance broker, right?
That's what the mayor said, went up substantially, right?
Yeah. And, you know, there's no secrets. We've, we have a $270,000 increase in our insurance costs in the last three years.
Wow.
I mean, that's what it really comes down to, right? And the village has been subsidizing the insurance fund, and we still are subsidizing the insurance fund in well into six figures, but by a half million dollars a year, we've been subsidizing our insurance.
Yeah, that's huge.
So, I mean, and we're still subsidizing it. We're not asking to come whole, right, on this, um, $30 increase. We're not asking to come whole, because we don't have to come whole, right? But we have to come meet in the middle, right? And we understand about everybody and taxes, and nobody wants anybody's tax go up. But we have a, literally a $270,000 increase in the last three years of our general liability insurance, and that's what this is generally going to cover, right? Is half of that, honestly, not all of it.
Well, right. Not even half, but yeah.
But that's what it's going to cover.
Okay. Oh, no, that, that was just a general question, is, you know, why you're going to raise one thing? If you have a surplus here, why do we need to raise it here? But that explains a lot more of it. And I know you'll do a lot more of it on the 20th, too. But I was doing the math, and it just wasn't working for me.
I got you. Our insurance broker will be here on the 20th to present the annual insurance to the board, and, um, it'll make more sense.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been, what we, what we've been doing is taking money and paying, you know. But now, from the last administration, all the money it cost us, we're getting hit right in the face with it. And now, you know, this board, we have to pay for it. Our insurance, our insurance policy went crazy.
Well, that's what Doug just said, a half a million dollars, a lot of money, huh?
You can't imagine how much it was, how much it is. So we just got to pay the piper. I mean, there's nothing we could do about it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ed.
Wait, I got one more quick thing.
We'll have all the numbers for you.
One second thing, though, just for Keith. Keith, could you consider a basketball court, putting two benches in there? There's no place for the parents, if, you know, or the grandparents, like my, when we're out there. There's nowhere for us to go. If it's something maybe...
Which park is it?
For the, the new basketball court.
Old Cameron?
Yeah, so we could, you could be in there for the basketball or skate park, and you just have somewhere for, to watch the kids from. There's no benches there. Just something to consider. Thanks.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks, I didn't mean to sound be so argumentative.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address this board? Go ahead.
Hi, Marietta Britt, Brittany Court. Um, I just wanted to follow up on, um, what I said a couple of months ago in regards to the garden that we've all closed out. We've made some very good advancements. Um, water will be available, from what I understand, next year. So we won't have to deal with rain barrels. We were able to get, um, some umbrellas out there to improve or to allow us to get some shade. And, um, uh, there will be some changes from an ADA perspective for a couple of the, um, uh, container gardens. So I just wanted to follow up on that, since I called everybody out on it then. And I just wanted to say that corrections were done and are on, on, on target to make a massive improvement.
Wonderful.
I think we may have a fence.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I think we're going to have more plots next year, aren't we?
Yes.
We're going to define it somehow.
I agree. I agree. There's a lot of dogs over there.
We won't put the fence up until after we add the plots.
But we have, uh...
Pretty fence, not a chain link fence.
No, 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 no.
Decorative fence.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, uh, the water lines, though, should be run and water be out there.
That'll be a huge improvement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I always complain, so I just wanted to say something nice.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to us? None? Is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Light?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.